Mr. Jimonangelo?
Here.
Mr. Jim?
Here.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Here.
Mr. Scapora?
Here.
Mr. Baldnary?
Here.
Mr. Forge?
Here.
Mayor Griffin?
Present.
All present. Approval minutes from June 11, 2012 meeting?
Madam Mayor, I move the minutes to the June 11, 2012 meeting be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the Secretary's desk, where he will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
Will we have a second?
I second the motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we have approval of the Fiscal Department reports and pay bills for the month of June 2012, may I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I so moved.
Okay, Mr. Baldnary, second please.
I'll second that.
Mr. Scapora, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Citizens request, does anybody like to talk? Please go to the back and state your name and address, please.
James Miller, 214 Menahad Avenue, here in Latrobe. I have a couple of comments on the authorization of an encroachment license agreement for the Jacob Falbo, and I don't know if it's been explained enough to the council, or if it's gone through the Planning Commission, or the Zoning Commission for approval. And I think maybe we should talk a little bit about this here before anything is done. Also, I have a question on the salary ordinance for the city health insurance plan for the community service officer. I don't know if that's, it's probably a great idea, but I don't know that it's been fully vetted or explained to the city people yet. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Miller, just a comment on your, the first item you raised. The encroachment easement is for, I think, a fence that is within the public right-of-way. Because this is within the property of the city, it doesn't have to go to the planning or zoning.
Okay.
Secondly, we have granted, over the years, many encroachment easements for many different reasons. The building of, I think, a set of glass doors on the Hotel Royal, someone who has a porch stoop that intrudes out into the right-of-way. Someone up on the hill has a, or a stone wall that is out in the right-of-way.
Right.
Throughout the town, over the years, there have been many kinds of different intrusions, and we look at it to make sure there's no safety issues, but so that there are no real estate issues or title issues, you know, we grant, we typically grant an encroachment license, a variance from the R. ordinance, and then an encroachment license.
Well, I thought you needed a, you know, variance had to go through the council.
No, it's a different kind of variance.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Kirk?
Kirk Frogg, 228 Lloyd Avenue. Uh, I have a question. Do you offhand know how much you're spending from the loan RX for spraying the Crickbank and the area along to Lohanna Creek?
Not offhand. If I can get that for you, Kirk, if you want to give me a call in the morning.
Yeah, because the reason why I'd say is, I sprayed a customer's weeds along the Lohanna Creek on River Avenue two weeks ago, and less than three days later, the weeds were dead. They were out, a week and a half ago it was sprayed, as I talked to one of my customers, and the weeds are still as green as commit. So, I feel that you may be getting a little bit of watered-down solutions, or something like that, that, you know, you're paying for this service and you're not getting what you need to kill the vegetation along the creek. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else? All right, committee reports? Marty here. Marty? Orangeth Authority? Department Chief, who am I?
I just wanted to let everyone know that we had a good fourth this year. All the guys and gal did a very good job. Everybody pitched in, worked, covered some of the overtime that was needed, and everything went off without a hitch. I was real proud of the department.
Thanks. Tom Resum.
Same thing, I just want to convey the same message, the fourth went out, went out of hitch. Pretty much everything went as planned, and no incidents, or anything out of the ordinary. Everything went well.
Okay, thanks. Dan?
No report. Go to the fourth, Mr. John.
Joe?
No report.
Thanks.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the first item of business under the agenda is under the Public Works Department, and it is awarding a contract for the 2012. I call it the regular paving program. The resolution reads as follows, acceptance and subbit awarding contract for paving, now therefore be resolved. Section one, that the... I'm sorry, I was just clearing something up with Barbara. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. The resolution would read that the bid of $180,051.35 submitted by Dairy Construction, in accordance with the bid specifications for labor and materials for the 2012 street paving project, at the unit prices set forth in the bid, for a total contract amount excluding change orders not to exceed $180,051.35, being the same as hereby accepted, for the paving Wall Street set forth in the bid specifications. In section two, that a contract being the same as hereby awarded to Dairy Construction at the unit prices and in accordance with all bid specifications at a total contract price excluding change orders not to exceed $180,051.35. Resolved in council this date, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by this solicitor.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Scapora, second?
I second, Madam.
Mr. Baldnary, any questions or discussion?
I just have a question, Alex, why the two bid opens, June 26 and July 3?
One was for CDBG, and one was for the regular paving program. Joe's prepared a map for council or for the public, two different colors to show where the different roads are located.
Thank you.
Any other question or discussion? Pardon? Mike, thanks. Mr. Scapora?
This is Resolution 2012-39. Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jimonangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mr. Baldnary?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Go to seven, yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next resolution then is for the Community Development Block Grant Paving Program, and it reads, "Acceptance of bidding awarding contract for the 2012 Community Development Block Grant Paving Program, whereas the city has received community development block grant funds for its 2012 paving program, whereas the council's requested city manager was designated to obtain bid quotations for the above described program, now therefore be resolved." Section one, that the bid of Tresco Paving submitted in accordance with the bid specifications for labor and materials for the 2012 Community Development Block Grants Street Paving Project at the unit prices set forth in the bid, for a total contract amount excluding any change orders not to exceed $112,002.50, being the same as hereby accepted. Section two, that a contract being the same as hereby awarded to Tresco Paving at the unit prices and in accordance with all bid specifications, at a total contract price excluding change orders not to exceed $112,002.50. Resolved in council this date, the motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Wolfert, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scapora, any questions or discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Paul, Gary?
The CDBG, whatever, the Community Development, anyways, this bid, it's, all the paving is going to be done in Fifth Ward?
Yes.
There's five streets to be paved?
Yes, sir. Would you like to comment on that? CDBG money, it has to be in approved areas, and it depends on a census that was taken, and they've taken consideration of things like property value and income, and Fifth Ward is one of the approved areas on the last census that was taken. In other words, there's a lot of areas of town that I just cannot go out and spend that money on, in that area, even though that street might warrant it even more.
This CDBG paving program, this is new?
No, sir.
No? We've just, we've done this before.
Yes, sir.
This is above and beyond our liquid fuel stats?
Yes.
Paving.
Our city paving program. Yes. You get so much money allotted from the county, you can spend a portion of it, you can divide it up into three years. Every three years, there's an amount of money that is given to your municipality, and there are guidelines to which you can spend it on. We have traditionally, for a number of years, been spending it on paving of streets.
When was the last time we paved under this grant program?
A few years back, in Fifth Ward. No, the most recent, excuse me, Mr. Baldnary, was Jefferson Street down here, when that was paved, that was CDBG money.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thanks, Joe. Okay, Paul?
This is Resolution 2012-30. Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Baldnary?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jimonangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Go to seven, yes.
Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item, the Public Works Department, is an ordinance which has been reviewed twice. The title of it is, "An Ordinance to Authorize and Acquire the Vacating Enclosure of a Portion of a 25-Foot Alley Situated in the Sixth Ward of the City of Latrobe, bounded on the east by property of Lawrence Henry and Kathleen Henry, his wife, and property of Adelphi USA Inc., bounded on the west by other lands of Adelphi USA Inc., bounded on the south by the Southley Lot Line Extended or Parcel Identified as Tax Map Number 150313025, and on the north by the Southley Right-of-Way Line of Pennsylvania State Route 981, known and designated as Lloyd Avenue, whereas the City of Latrobe now desires to vacate a portion of a 25-foot alley, which said alley is bounded, and it's the same description as I just read, now therefore be it enacted and ordained. Section one, that all that certain precautions, the 25-foot wide alley identified on Exhibits A and B attached here too, being the same as hereby vacating enclosed. Section two, that any all ordinances or resolutions or parts thereof inconsistent herewith, being the same or hereby repealed. Section three, that the within ordinance shall become effective upon the date of post-enactment publication of notice of passage of the saying enacted and ordained this ninth day of July 2012. The motion would be to enact the ordinance as outlined and read by the solicitor."
May I have a motion?
I so moved, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldnary, second please.
I second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forge, any questions or discussion?
Madam Mayor, does this tie in with that plan that is being presented? How does it tie in with that plan? I'll ask whoever represents Adelphi.
It's fair to say it does, yes.
Pardon?
It's fair to say that it does tie in. Dan?
Madam Mayor, if I may, Daniel Hewitt, I'm solicitor for Adelphi. The alley in question is the alley that comes in next to Henry's service station that exists today, comes in and ends at this point at the Adelphi property. There's not a true alley, it ends at where the City of Latrobe owns the property. We are looking to, and we have the drawing that would show it better than here.
That means?
It's not, no, that. It's to abandon that portion, essentially where the school building is going to come down. We've already traded lands with the Henrys. Their lot used to go this way, it now goes this way based upon a subdivision that you've done. It is this portion of alley here, the back portion of the alley that comes into the Henry service station.
As I understand it, even though we abandoned that alley, there still are certain rights?
Private owners still have rights, correct?
Private owners and public owners that are aware of the...
Well, private, and once you abandon it, it divests to the owners on either side of the land. In this case, it's the Henrys on the one side and the Adelphi on the other.
That isn't the opinion of the solicitor for the city.
I've always, in the past, Mr. Jim and Mr. Hewitt, that anyone who is in the plan of lots still has private easement rights, but those rights can be taken away from them if the alleyway is in fact blocked for a period of 21 years.
Correct.
So, the public in general loses its rights. It would only be the lot owners in the plan of lots who lose that alley.
If that's actually in a plan of lots.
If it is, if it is. I agree with you.
You don't know?
I didn't bring that file with me today, I'm sorry. I know that these were lots of record, I don't know if it was a plan.
I guess, Mr. Hewitt, the reason I'm asking a question is, originally, I thought, the gentleman, Mr. Gregory, indicated that there would be an allowed use of the former playground that three and a half acres that we sold.
That's land back here.
That is correct. And in order to get there, you have to have access to it, and also you, I thought that there was a desire to have access to Lohanna Creek, for walking along the creek, et cetera. And that plan shows me no access to the creek or to that parcel of ground, and I was wondering if you couldn't include on the plan that, what you had said earlier, that you would work with the foundation to allow access, and could you include on that plan the fact that you will allow access to the creek, and will be reasonable in allowing that?
Well, I don't know that that's a proper item for a plan, that's certainly a proper item for an agreement to be reached between the city, the foundation, and Adelphi. Mr. Gregory?
It doesn't have to be the foundation, it could be just the city.
Mr. Gregory was on the phone today with the folks at the foundation discussing this very topic because, and I know we're jumping ahead to the site plan issue.
I don't think you can, I think you have to do them all at the same time. Madam Mayor, I would suggest we do all, the three of them, and get everything out of the way in the plan.
If I can address that, our concern, based upon our dealings today, Mr. Jim, is that County Conservation and Westwood County Conservation District, as part of the NPDES permit for this site, is raising questions as to whether it's going to allow any creek access at this point. They, I mean, they told me that they want to make it a conservation easement along the creek. I mean, that was the conversation, the letter came out of Jim Pillsbury at County Conservation today.
If we don't have access on that plan, it'll obviate any possibility of having access to whatever, whether they allow it or not. I just think, if you're going to allow access, and you said you were, it should be on the plan, that you won't deny reasonable access to the creek.
Well, it's physical access, because we're asking that this portion of alley be abandoned, but there is this roadway being added as part of this site development.
Who can go on it?
It can be blocked or barred in any way.
Well, will you put that on the plan? Pedestrian can use that?
Nope. I mean, I don't, again, I'm concerned about adding things to the plan that, no offense or not, germane under your developmental ordinance or under the MPC. I mean, I don't have a problem doing an agreement that allows access, or even an easement with the city that allows access. We've been working, as I've noted, with the foundation to come up with an easement as part of what Alex has talked about in the past, as far as a walking path to get across here. We've been working on all those things, none of which are finalized. So, to add something to a plan tonight that may be in contravention to what is ultimately determined, I think is counterproductive.
Well, could you put on the plan that you are not going to deny reasonable access?
Mr. Jim, if I may interrupt, I don't think this has anything to do with the vacating hour.
I agree with you, but both things have to be considered together, I think, that's what I'm trying to say. Well, could you give us an assurance tonight, either you or Mr. Gregory, Mr. Hewitt, that you will not deny access for pedestrian or bicycle traffic in the event that is otherwise allowed?
Absolutely.
All right, can you make that a part of the minutes, Madam Secretary?
That's been our point all along. I just, putting it on the plan is, I mean, particularly for a plan that does not get...
And can you then give us some form of agreement that we can execute between the parties?
Yes, we will do that. I mean, I don't, when's our next board meeting, Bill? Until September, though. Yeah. My next board meeting for Adelphi, September, so that's the earliest I can get a formal agreement on that.
All right, thank you. You don't have to rush it, as long as you've said it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Richard, any other questions or discussion? Okay, Paul?
This is ordinance 2012-7. Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Baldnary?
Yes.
Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
No.
Mr. Jimonangelo?
No.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Go to five, yes, two, no.
Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item on the agenda under Public Works is a resolution which I will read. It's authorizing granting of a sanitary sewer easement to the Unit Township Municipal Authority on the city garage property, whereas the Unit Township Municipal Authority has requested that the City of Latrobe grant to it a certain 15-foot wide right-of-way and/or easement with the installation of a sanitary sewer line along property owned by the City of Latrobe upon which is located the city garage and transfer station, whereas Council of the City of Latrobe desires to grant such easement or right-of-way, now therefore be resolved. Section one, that the City of Latrobe hereby grants unto Unit Township Municipal Authority an easement for the construction, operation, and maintenance of a sanitary sewer facility as fully set forth, and grant of right-of-way easement attached here to is Exhibit 1. Section two, that the location said easement is set forth on Exhibit A attached to the grant of right-of-way easement. Section three, the mayor, city secretary, city manager, or any other proper city officer you are hereby authorized and directed to execute the grant of the right-of-way easement agreement, and take any and all further action and/or sign any and all other documents required to carry into effect. This resolution resolved in council this date attached to the resolution is a copy of the proposed right-of-way and a print outlining the location of the easement, which would basically be along the creek area and our property, which is the transfer station.
Madam Mayor, may I comment? The Director of Public Works and I would recommend we don't move on this this evening. We were hoping that by this evening, we would have another drawing of an alternative route. We're not satisfied with this current drawing. We don't think, as it is now, it is in the best interest of the city to grant as it is represented on that drawing. So, we would like the council really not to consider this at this point.
Table it.
And table it, and hopefully by August, we'll have a drawing that we find to be satisfactory.
Madam Mayor, I suggest that we table this matter.
Okay.
I second the motion, Madam.
Mr. Baldnary?
Any questions?
Any questions?
Come on, table it.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried, be tabled until at least August.
The next item appears under the Planning and Development Department, and it is a resolution authorizing an encroachment license agreement with Mr. Jacob Falbo, and it reads, "Whereas Jacob Falbo owns real property located at 736 Brinker Avenue in Latrobe, and whereas Mr. Falbo has constructed a four-foot-high spaced picket fence which encroaches approximately seven feet into the right-of-way of Sylvan Avenue, whereas Mr. Falbo has requested from the Council of the City of Latrobe an encroachment license to permit the picket fence to continue its existence in the city right-of-way, now therefore be resolved." Section one, that the Council of the City of Latrobe hereby grants a variance for property owned by Jacob M. Falbo located at 736 Brinker Avenue, Latrobe, PA, from the provisions of Section 85.8 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Latrobe. Further, Council also grants Mr. Falbo an encroachment license for a four-foot-high spaced picket fence fronting on Sylvan Avenue to encroach into the right-of-way of Sylvan Avenue at the current location of said fence. Said encroachment license agreement is attached here to it as Exhibit A. Section two, that the variance and encroachment license is hereby granted upon the following condition, is the current owner of the property should become deceased if the property is transferred by gift or sale, or if the fence becomes in a state of disrepair requiring replacement, or if the property owner shall violate any provision of the encroachment license agreement and shall fail to correct said violation upon notice from the city then, in that event, the fence shall be removed off the right-of-way and onto the property of the current property owner, and the encroachment license agreement shall become null and void. Resolved in council this date and attached to the resolution is a proposed restricted encroachment license agreement.
May I have a motion?
The motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined.
Okay, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Scapora, second?
Second.
Mrs. Wolfert, any questions or discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Ms. Powell, it's my understanding that permit is necessary for the erection of the fence?
There was a permit issued, zoning permit. When I went to check on it, I found that he had come out for a right-of-way, so I told him to stop working and either, I'm here for a license, or he'd have to remove it, put it back on his own property. So, he had a permit, it just violated his permit as well.
He had a permit, and when he applied, did he indicate where that fence was going to be, and were you assured that the setback...
I told people you put it on the line.
That the setback requirements were met?
No. I don't know where people's lines are. I just know where our right-of-way is, so that's how I knew it was out of the right-of-way.
He applied for the permit prior to the construction of this fence?
Right.
And then how did you learn that the fence was being erected?
With a zoning permit, I have to check, because there's rules.
But there was no indication prior to the issuance of this permit where the fence was going to be established?
I assumed it would be on his property line. That's what...
Pardon, what'd you just say? You assumed it was going to be on the what?
Either on his property line or in.
Inside the property line? Is that indicated in the permit, then?
It's what I tell people when they come in for a fence permit.
Is that what you told him?
Mm-hmm.
That it had to be on the property line?
It can be if you want it to be on the property line, yes.
Did you tell him that?
Yes.
And then he violated the permit?
Because I apparently didn't know where his property line was.
He didn't?
No. He assumed that's where his property line was, where he started to put the fence.
You recently moved into this house, Mr. Falbo?
Yeah.
And you had a survey, your lot was surveyed, and you wanted to sue me?
I bought it from the previous owner, a real estate agent or anything like that, just myself.
Did you know where the property line was?
I did not, I just assumed it went to the curb.
Are the bushes on the outside of the fence being...
The bushes that were already there run all the way to the curb.
So, the bushes were already on city property?
Yes.
And then you put the fence on the inside of the bushes?
Mrs. Wolfert, anybody else? Anybody else?
I just think that, you know, we need to be more sentient when it comes to the granting of these permits where there may be infringement on, in the right-of-way.
of these permits where there may be infringement on, in the right-of-way.
Yeah, we just, you know...
I mean, in this case, it doesn't seem to make a difference, but it could make a difference.
Well, we already granted one, but Mr. Albert got one made, so I mean, it seems like we're doing it.
I understand that, but yeah.
You have to check it, though. Somebody has to check it.
I did check. That's how I found it was...
I know, before you issue the permit or instruction, how much would it cost to move the fence back?
Six or seven hundred dollars maybe, at this point. Would that be like, where your fence is at? Does somebody have to walk on the road now? I mean, gosh, happened to Mr. Albert, Richard had to walk on the road, and he didn't like that.
I remember right there.
There's no curb there, so you walk on the road anyways.
You can comfortably get in and out of the car there. But the other point that I should have made in my letter was that there is actually a sidewalk on the other side of that street, but it's actually being covered up by some hedges. The hedges have actually grown down onto the sidewalk and almost over onto the road. So, and I just actually looked at that, maybe last week, I looked through the bushes up and saw a sidewalk. So, I mean...
Other questions or discussion?
Do you have any objections from the neighbors?
I haven't. Actually, I've had more support than anything.
They're good neighbors out there.
Were you his neighbor? No, no. I lived in that street long ago. I never used it.
No, I don't live there now. Okay. Barbara?
I ask, can you cut the strawberry back?
Well, the strawberries, the roots are actually, would be on the right-of-way, so I'd actually have to pull the strawberry out there. I mean, they're maybe twelve foot high, like some kind of pine tree.
This is across the street, though, not your, on your property.
Oh, across the street?
No, I don't know what you're talking about.
I'm talking about his property. There's strawberry in front of the fence before you get to the roadway. Is that what you're telling?
Yeah, there's strawberry that runs along the back of my property, that provides my property from my neighbor's backyard, and those run all the way up to the curb. And, I mean, you'd have to pull up the whole bush and there's both, ten to twelve foot high. It's been there for quite a while.
Work with Ann on this, would you please?
Okay, Ann, anybody else? Okay, Barbara?
This is Resolution 2012-41. Mr. Baldmarin?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
I'm going to vote yes, because we've done it before. Yes.
Mr. Jivin Angela?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Merrick Griffin?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes.
Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item also appears under Planning and Development, and it is a resolution, which has actually been tabled from the last meeting. It is entitled Improving Land Development Plan of Adelphi USA Inc. for erection of the school building in the sixth ward of the city of Latrobe, whereas applicant has submitted a land development plan and specifications to the Latrobe Planning Commission for the erection of Interoliah School Building. Said structure to be located on property of Adelphi USA Inc. in the sixth ward, and whereas Latrobe Planning Commission has reviewed the land development plan and specifications, and has recommended approval of the land development plan as requested, whereas city council acknowledges that the parking to be constructed for the school development meets and exceeds the city's minimum required number of parking spaces, and that the excess spaces are to accommodate Adelphi USA's development in UNE Township. The plan shows a total of fifty spaces in two separate parking lots, including four reserved for handicap spaces. The city's only requires twelve spaces for the school portion of the development. Now therefore be resolved, section one, that the land development plan of Adelphi USA Inc. be, and same is hereby approved according to the plan and specifications submitted to the Latrobe Planning Commission. Section two, the mayor, secretary, city council, and any other proper city officer being or hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents necessary to carry into effect this resolution resolved in council of this date. The motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
Sound moved, Madam Mayor.
Second, please.
I second, Madam Mayor.
Questions or discussions?
Madam Mayor, with the assertion that was made recently by Mr. Gregory and Mr. Uwitt, that there would be, that access would not be unreasonably denied for pedestrians and perhaps bicycle traffic, I, I'm going to change my vote and vote in favor of this.
Any other discussion? Okay.
Barbara? This is Resolution 2012-42. Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Jivin Angela?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarin?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Merrick Griffin?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes.
Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we are now under Administration, Finance Department. There are two items, both resolutions. The first one is entitled amending ordinance number 2000...
An ordinance?
Oh, I'm sorry. One's an ordinance, one's a resolution. This is an ordinance, which has been advertised. And it's an ordinance, amending ordinance number 2012-2, to establish healthcare benefits for the community service officer, whereas pursuant to ordinance 2012-2, council established wages and benefits for various positions of the city, whereas there is a test ordinance 2012-2, exhibit A, which describes wages and benefits for these various positions, and whereas in exhibit A, the wages and benefits for the community service officer were set forth, and council now desires to amend these benefits of the community service officer, now therefore be enacted and ordained, section one, that the provision set forth in exhibit A in ordinance 2012-2 for the community service officer reads as follows. Beth Kellman, part-time community service officer, compensation for the year fiscal year 2012, twelve dollars per hour fringe benefits is established by council, section two. That the provision of the community, for the community service officer set forth on exhibit A, attached ordinance 2012-2, is hereby amended to read as follows. The addition would be further, there's additional language, the same language I read is still there. Further, the community service officer shall have the opportunity to enroll in the city's health insurance plans, including medical, dental, vision, and life. The city will provide fifty percent of the cost of participation. Section three, that ending all other ordinances or resolutions inconsistent here with, being the same, were hereby repealed. Section four, that all other provisions of ordinance number 2012-2 not repealed or amended shall remain in full force and effect. And section five, that within ordinance shall take effect on the date of publication of post-enactment notice of passage of the same enacted and redeemed to state. The motion would be to enact the ordinances outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
Sound moved, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldmarin, second, please.
I'll second.
Mr. Scupora, any questions or discussion? Questions, discussion? Okay, Barbara?
This is ordinance 2012-8. Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Jivin Angela?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarin?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Merrick Griffin?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes.
Motion carried.
The last item under Administration Finance is a resolution, and it's entitled Authorizing the Signing of UPMC Health Plan Employer Online Usage Application, whereas the city will be participating in the UPMC Health Plan in fiscal year 2012 and beyond, whereas CB Tracing Associates Inc. are the administrator of this plan for the city, and whereas the city is requested to sign an amendment to the UPMC Health Plan Group Agreement to enable the administrator to participate as an online user, now therefore be resolved, section one. The council of the city of Latrobe hereby authorizes the mayor, city secretary, city manager, and/or any other proper city officer to execute the amendment to the UPMC Health Plan Group Agreement attached hereto as exhibit A, and to take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution resolved in council this date. The motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion, please?
Sound moved.
Mrs. Wolfert, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scupora, any questions or discussion?
How long does this last, this authorization? Is there any termination date in the resolution?
No. It lasts as long, it lasts as long as CB Tracing Associates would be the plan administrator. It's really to enable them to go online, to obtain medical information when necessary to help administrate the plan.
Not any violation of the rest of them?
Not medical information. Just payment information, address changes, you know, that type of, that type of data. Not, not anything medical, not anything medically related.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, discussions? Okay, Barbara?
This is Resolution 2012-43. Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarin?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jivin Angela?
Yes.
Merrick Griffin?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes.
Motion carried.
That concludes the action items, Madam Mayor, members of council.
Lieutenant Underwood, any business?
Alex, where are we on the opening date for the garage? Do we have one yet?
Not a specific date, but mid-August. It's on schedule.
Thank you.
Alex, are we working on some sort of ground rules or ground layout for pilot programs for the nonprofits in the city?
Yes, the first thing we've done is, we've done some property research to determine the three categories, quite frankly, of nonprofits. The business enterprises, like Adelphi or the hospital, the, what would be churches, places of worship, synagogues, and then government, which of course would be the school district and municipal and so forth. And looking at those three categories, we've figured out how many parcels, what's the valuation in acreage, and from that, you know, kind of try, get an idea of what they would owe if they were taxable properties. You know, and that's kind of the basis right now. And, and, under the, or the, I'm sorry, the early intervention program plan, it's going to be addressed in there with recommendations on how to, how to approach, what kind of language, and what's the formula. You may have heard that the city of Pittsburgh has, again, tried to, in their end, negotiate with their nonprofits, including hospitals and universities. Quite frankly, it's a statewide issue, because if we were able to get them to consider making payments in lieu of taxes with us, for example, the hospital, it would put them in a position having to negotiate similar arrangements in maybe a half dozen or more municipalities in Russell County. So it's not as simple for them on their side to make it with one, they almost have to make it with all, and until the Harrisburg puts a foot down, it's challenging.
Are they looking, they looking at that? I, I read somewhere that they were, I believe. Have you heard anything about that? That Harrisburg's looking at something?
There is nothing current, you know, before the legislature. So, so what I anticipate, in August, you're going to get a chance to look at the early intervention plan, and you'll see what that language has, and maybe in September, we'll be able to authorize, be able to authorize us to begin approaching with the negotiation and have it set forth, you know, standardized, depending on, again, different entities.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Scupora, I might suggest that we consider making the earned income tax applicable to non-residents that work in the city, and we would not have to go through this pilot program where we have to really go in and request unbended need to receive some funds. The city of Pittsburgh has, and as a whole little community, we are allowed to oppose an earned income tax over and above what is paid by individuals that work here but don't live here. For instance, I notice that, and I'm not trying to pick on Mr. Graziana and also Barbara, either both of you work here, but you don't live here, and you do not pay our earned income tax, but we ought to be considering that, because it would be a way of perhaps reimbursing the city for all the employees that come in from out of town, and help pay for our police department, which costs us five thousand dollars a day, and our public works and our fire department. So, we provide a great deal of services for people that come in here, and yet, they are not paying us anything, and when we go to the nonprofit, we're met with a blank face, or you have to spend a lot of administrative time, and you don't get it. I think that the earned income tax would, to non-residents, I think would bring that money in, and we can do it, we should. We're paying only one point one-three here. Perhaps we should do it two ways, go up to one point two-five, and those who are in communities that are paying only one would have to pay us the point two-five. It could mean sixty-five to a hundred, and I, I can't even imagine how much it is. It could mean as much as a hundred and fifty thousand a year to the city. So...
Good idea. You had a little hint there.
I would hope that we look into that, or it's seriously considered. And one other thing, you've got to pass it, you've got to pass it shortly, because you have to get on the register for the companies to enforce and take it out of the employee's income. So if you don't do it soon, you're not going to, it'll be valid, let's say as of January first, but the companies will not be able to collect it at that time. So I'm just saying, please consider that, instead of the pilot program, this would be in lieu of the pilot.
If you're addressing a comment to me, I've done preliminary research, the commuter tax of which you reference, we will, again, continue to research, but it's not legal for us to do that. It's not going to enable statewide. Unfortunately, Harrisburg will pick and choose which communities are able to do whatever it is they decide they're able to do. Philadelphia has one of the highest commuter taxes in the United States, again, which is a tax on workers within the city. What Harrisburg has allowed local government to do is enact a fifty-two-dollar tax, which we do collect on every employee within the city of Latrobe. Harrisburg has not authorized us to be able to tax the difference from what we have as far as the earned income tax.
I don't agree with you, Alex. I think that it is, it is allowable, because we are a home rule community. I disagree with you on that point.
Well, if we can, all power to us, we should do it. But nonetheless, it's...
Thank you. We ought to get it to try.
It's something, again, I've asked the consultants, and I've asked state people who have given me that answer, but I've asked the consultants to, to look at it, and I assure you that our solicitor has written down careful notes as well. But again, what the state has done is allowed us to do the fifty-two dollars, which we do have, but it's very particular how it enables municipalities to do something. So, you know, Pittsburgh may have one set of rules, Philadelphia another set, and the rest of us, a whole different set, and that's unfortunately the way they do business with us.
What you're saying, though, is if, if we are allowed, because we're a home rule community, you would recommend it?
I'd go for it. Sure, yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No business? No business?
Have we received any bids yet for our waste contract?
Bids are due July 20th.
Right, next Friday, yeah. We don't know, we're not aware if we've received any bids.
I imagine they'll come in that day.
What time are you going to open them up, Alex, when you come?
Eleven AM, Friday, the 20th.
Do you want to give your report?
Sure. My report is as written. One highlight, I guess, or one thing I'd like to mention, during the Fourth of July parade, a fireman had a boot drive, and I believe Mr. Scupora, there was twenty-two hundred dollars raised.
Fairly close to that, yes.
Yeah. Thank the community for their generosity, and quite frankly, for the firemen and women in this community to do that, and get out there in a hot day, and try to draw up the money. Hopefully next year, we can do more, and maybe even double it. Related to that, again, there's a meeting tomorrow evening in this building, in this room, related to Legion Keener and the rebuilding of Playland, so the public ought to be aware of that. And council co-packing did close on the purchase of the Chestnut Bottling And council co-packing did close on the purchase of the chestnut bottling plant here across the river, as noted in the newspapers, and this might be an opportunity for council to entertain ideas of learning programs where the council may want to have an incentive for them to do, to move here. And it works like this, they're renting their facility in New Kensington and Arnold. They're going to move lines, product lines, kind of one at a time. The quicker the product lines move, the quicker the employees will be in the city, the quicker we get the $52 per person per year. So, a couple things to think about. One, the building's sold, and it's probably likely that the new tenant will want an assessment, a reassessment of their property. It's pretty typical when a property sells, particularly if it's a big difference between the asking price and the price that's sold. But the idea of incentivizing this particular developer as, or this particular businesses was discussed in the last meeting, was that maybe they get the product lines over here quicker and get full employment quicker into the city, which would, you know, help the city's tax rolls on the other side, on the income side. So, something to think about, because I think that was something that, you know, we wanted to be pro-business, or want to try to encourage business investments in the community. Quite frankly, I'm glad it sold, and surprised it has sold so quickly. I wasn't anticipating the sale to happen this quick, but it's closed and moved.
Alex, what's our tax revenue on that property there? Do you know roughly offhand?
Unfortunately, I do, do know, but it's the third largest taxpayer rate now in the community, it's probably the fourth, yeah. You can sub-nominate that for you, Mark.
On your comment about the boot drive for the fireman, the $2,200 roughly brought in was greatly appreciated by the fire department, and to put that in perspective, that is not enough money to buy one fireman the personal protective gear that's needed, but that's, it helps him, we're very glad to do that. It's real close to $3,000 to get a set of PPE or personal protective equipment, the boots, the gloves, the helmets, the pants, the coat, the no-mets with everything, but we're very appreciative for everything you have. Just to put that in perspective, that's not quite enough to buy one set of gear for a fireman.
That's a good thing to bring up, though, because I don't think so many people realize that.
It's safe to say that the volunteer firemen and women in the community saved the city of Latrobe significant dollars. If we were to have full-time, 24-hour paid staff, it would be probably nearly a million dollars, and maybe about a $5 million budget. So it just gives you an idea of the money that's saved through bingo, through raffles, through subsales, and boot drives.
Same thing about the parade, agree with Chief and Chief and, and us people, you know, for such a hot day and so many people who were there, a long parade, so went very well, I thought. Thanks, everybody. Okay, have a motion for adjournment?
I'm the Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldneri, second?
I'll say.
Mr. Sepora, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.